Good morning, everybody. It's 7:30. We've got our council work session this morning for Monday, January 24th. Today, the two items on our agenda are Adopt a Park and Trail Program and the Social Equity Recreation Program. So, Mr. Manager, I'll kick it over to you, and then it looks like we have Mr. Ben Page that's going to step up.
Yeah, good morning, Mayor and council members. So, the council had asked for more opportunity to hear about different programming across the organization. So, as you might imagine, our first thought was to the Parks Department. And when I talked with Ben, he had a couple of great ideas of projects to bring forward to you. So, here we are this morning, and I'll turn it over to Ben.
Data, talk about two new programs, one that started last spring and one that we intend to start this spring. So, first up is the one that started last spring. And with the onset of the pandemic, I think it comes to no surprise to this group that we saw up to 200% increased use in our parks and trails. And with that increase, we also saw a demand for more maintenance. To be innovative and try to be very creative with tough budgets, we once again challenged our volunteer team to come up with a new program. One thing that we know is this community is very, very great about taking ownership in its parks and its trails and its rec programs. And so, we thought if we gave a specific program that would allow folks to not only be a volunteer in general, but to volunteer for something that's near and dear to them or in their neighborhood, it would hit a lot of the marks. And as you're about to see, it did hit a lot of marks. And I want to introduce to you a member of our volunteer team, Rachel Haydenfield. Come on up. Rachel was the challenge, we gave Rachel the challenge to take this program and to build it. So, she deserves all the credit. She's built this for the team, and she manages this program. Without further ado, Rachel. No, she's a staff member.
Yep, yep.
We need all our staff and kids, girl. So, yeah, you'll sit up there right by the microphone. That stays there, please. I'll go back and forth.
All right. Good morning, Mayor, County, and council members. I'm Rachel Haynefield, Field Coordinator for the Des Moines Parks and Recreation Department. I'm here this morning to provide you an update on our park and trail adoption program. In 2021, the Parks and Recreation Department formalized the program with a new framework, requirements, and an agreement, as well as some other new perks you'll see here today. The program primarily focuses on litter removal, but there is flexibility for us to reach out to the volunteers to ask for assistance on other small maintenance projects in their adoption areas. An area can be adopted by an individual or a group. Adoption requires a one-year commitment with a minimum of four cleanups per year. Some sites may need more help at peak times. For example, at Prospect Park this summer, the adoption group came almost weekly. Following a cleanup, we asked that volunteers submit a quick report to help us track their success. There are some costs associated with operating this program, like with anything that we do. So, we want to make sure we are getting a good return on investment and doing high priority work for the city, making the best use of both staff and volunteer time. Parks and Trail staff work with our team to identify priority locations that would be a good fit for volunteers to assist with. A list of adoptable locations is then put online along with the adoption process. Here, volunteers can find items such as the program description, COVID-19 safety protocol, the adoption agreement, and a list of those priority locations, which are updated by staff as places are adopted. See if I can get the website up for you to show you. Can everyone see that?
Yeah.
Great. So, in this tab here, you can view the adoptable parks and our adoptable trail segments. Once adopted, we work with the individuals or group to provide a litter cleanup kit or all the supplies and safety information that they need to successfully and safely host a cleanup event. This includes a new online waiver form so they can easily sign up other friends or family to help them. There are lots of items to cover before someone gets started, but we've tried to make it as easy as possible for them. This kit includes a checklist to help them plan for before, during, and after their event. In the bottom left-hand corner, you will see a QR code for following their event. This allows them to scan the code easily with their phone camera and provide instant feedback and report to our, to us, the cleanup data, including some unique signs that you'll see here. Lastly, after the individual or group has hosted their first cleanup event, their official sign is installed. This is a great way to thank our volunteers and bring recognition to the program and recruit more volunteers. Special thank you to Park Planner Derek Hanson for the design and installation standards he created. There are many benefits to the program, such as cleaner and safer parks and trails, but we also find that this program creates other efficiencies. It supports our staff, allows them to plan for regular litter pickup, and makes them more available to address safety concerns to park and trail users. Plus, it's provided avenues to get people out in our parks and engage with each other and the surrounding community. It has taken off and grown exponentially, engaging 450 volunteers this past year. Beyond the Adopt a Park and Adopt a Trail Program, we continue to welcome volunteers to assist with single cleanup events. Together, the program had 871 volunteers participate, bringing the combined value of all of our litter cleanups to more than $70,000. This is a pre-pandemic infographic showing the volunteer engagement increase over time from 2009 to 2019, more than doubling in a decade, and the increased value to the city nearing $1 million of service annually. This is just a snapshot of the actual value of a volunteer program, which goes way beyond dollars and hours and is seen in the increased community engagement, civic pride, other returns on our investments, such as economic development and safety benefits. Improving our staffing helps improve our service level to the community and helps us give room to be more creative and innovative as a city and how to continually adapt and provide better service and programs. I also want to point out that this year, we had these bike trailers donated by Keep Iowa Beautiful and Friends of Des Moines Parks. So, volunteers can take these out with them to collect litter from the trails and easily pick up litter and show off this amazing program. Before I leave today, I do want to take a quick moment to thank Parks and Recreation Supervisor Calu Liao Courtright for her support in helping with this presentation today. Thank you to Director Page, Assistant Director Richmond, Retired Parks Manager Ron Ward, New Parks Manager Mike Gall, Horticulture Inspector Paul Strohm, and all of their teams for their support. They helped lay the foundation for this program to be successful. We have had such a great response and are currently unable to staff additional park and trail adoption locations. We're not at this time. Yeah, I guess I'll let you address that.
So, with the capacity, as you know, we already have a very successful volunteer program. I mean, I'll put a plug into tomorrow night. You'll hear more about that again from this last year. We have two coordinators that coordinate volunteer work and then a field coordinating position that makes sure the work is done safely and professionally. Adding this program and having the success it just had in this last spring and summer, we're at capacity where staff cannot manage. These things all take a lot of pre-planning and post-planning together. So, their bandwidth is where we're at now is not, being unable to take any more of these programs on.
So, I hope in your budget, you're asking for additional, I mean, because what we're getting, I mean, I think that would pay for an additional, whether it be a seven-month person or seasonal person, or is that included in the upcoming budget, or?
To expand the volunteer program, we would need another position like Rachel. And I think, as you can see from the charts, we're able to produce much more value than what the cost would be. I figured that question might come up. We're looking at with the position, the benefits, the salaries, and the commodities, and the trash grabbers and bags and all that, about $100,000 to add more volunteer work throughout the park, trails, and cemetery system.
But how much more would we add if we had to do it ourselves? I guess would be the question that I would ask.
We would not be able to, for $100,000, you would get one full-time maintenance person, and they would not be able to cover as much territory as hundreds of volunteers could cover.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, I think, Ben, if you could talk briefly about the interest, additional interest in volunteerism. So, I think that's key as well.
Right.
We didn't, it is not in the budget at the moment to be added. But I wanted to have this discussion and understand what this presentation shows us is that it is productive, that we are limited at the moment with the number of opportunities and locations for that volunteerism. If there's interest, Ben and I would need to work to add that into the budget for additional locations.
Absolutely. Could you go back to the slide that shows the infographic from 2009? We know from just the previous experiences we've had over a decade that every employee will generate X amount of different volunteer opportunities. You'll see here, I like looking at the pre-pandemic years, so '16, '17, and '18. You can almost round that up to about 35,000 hours of volunteer. And if you just did simple math and took the three employees, we're going to get 10,000 hours of volunteer work per employee. So, it would be safe to presume another staff member would, at a minimum, give us another 10,000 hours of volunteer work. And to equate that to a full-time city employee, 2,080 hours in the work week, that's five times as much as what one city employee would get. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, it did for me, at least.
Anybody else have anything? Linda?
I'd just like to add that, just looking at these numbers, I know that it's budget time, and I hope and pray that we make our parks and trails a priority in our upcoming budget. It's obvious that during the COVID, our parks are being used. Everybody's out there in our parks. That's not going to go away. They've discovered how wonderful our parks and trails are. I really hope that we can make it a priority. You know, if we have to cut somewhere else, I think our parks and trails are very important.
Carl, Indira, anything?
Yeah, hold on, I'm trying to send a photo to Kay to put up there. Well, come on that, Indira.
Okay, sorry, sorry. So, do you have any individuals that are helping, kind of on a, instead of adopting a trail, do you have any individuals that are helping in the downtown area?
Yes, Carl and I have a unique, one of his constituents, but it's turned out to be an amazing volunteer, a gentleman named John Tyler, right, Taylor, John Taylor. He has been working as a retiree, just walking up and down basically the Meredith Trail from Gray's Lake to Principal Park. And we've come to know John real well because we get an email from John every day about, he's filled our trash cans between there and there. And so, there's lots of stories like John out there in this system. Again, you'll see that tomorrow night at our Volunteer Recognition Awards. There's so many great groups, individuals, service clubs. It just charges our batteries every time we get to just see one of these charts and we get to talk to our volunteers. It's just amazing, the support we get from this community. And thank you to Councilmember Westergaard. We have a nationally-ranked park system. We're the 35th-best park system in the United States by the Trust for Public Lands, and it's because of great policy leadership from our council, our park board, our amazing staff, but most of all, the volunteers. If we hadn't had 30-some hours, 30,000 hours of volunteers, I can't imagine what our park system would look like.
So, yeah, so John also counts his steps when he's out picking up trash. And he did one day, he did 50,000 steps.
In one truckload of trash. No exaggeration.
That's amazing.
So, and just an aside, because it's not so great to run and walk outside, he's been on the skywalk.
We can use the break.
Yeah. So. Kay may have a photo of just one of the groups that, volunteer groups is called the Friday Fun Group. Kay, can you put that up?
You can ask your presentations.
Go ahead.
Oh, can I get out of it? Pick it up.
So, this group got, oh, I think 20 tires, a refrigerator, a water heater. You know, when you get farm kids out to volunteer for pickup, I mean, they're not afraid of anything. So, that just gives you an idea of things that they picked up on one section of the trail, so.
That's like along Grand View Park. I mean, when I did that stretch, it's amazing what you'll find. So, on your most strange things, you might not want to put that, some of the things I found, so.
It could be entertaining, it could be scary all the same time, yes. I want to thank all of you. You've all been great supporters. You showed up at our Earth Day Trash Pass events. You've all come out different times to help volunteers, so thank you to the council as well.
So, if we have limited ability, how do we pick the parks that we're using for this program? And it looked like there were some parks that weren't adopted. Does that imply that there's additional capacity to get to those parks that weren't adopted, or?
Very insightful, you paid close attention. So, there's a list, and it's a little bit of science and a little bit of field observations. The science behind it is the bigger, more used parks that have more attendance. And the science behind that is how often do the men and women that take care of the maintenance go out and collect an empty trash and pick up litter? We picked the highest-profile areas that have the most need and use. On that list, you saw there was a couple that were in progress and a couple that we're still trying to find. We kind of, we've kind of guesstimated that to be our ability to take that much work on. That's our peak capacity with this program with the staff we have today.
Okay, so we're not quite at peak, but we're pretty close.
We're close. I'd say we're in the 90 percentile, and it's difficult. I also want to remind it, the volunteer staff, we've actually added their plate, too. They do community gardens, they help with environmental education. They're not just volunteer staff.
And what time tomorrow night?
Yes, please, 5 o'clock. We're going to run a real fast and efficient operation. We're very sensitive COVIDs. We're going to have our clusters of award winners in the hallway. We're going to have the council in the back of the MSC chambers, the park board in the front, read an award, take a picture, cycle them out. The next group comes in, so we'll try to be very efficient and very sensitive to the COVID pandemic.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
Thanks for all the work, making things look better for me.
Thank you.
All right, Scott? Should we move on to the Social Equity Recreation Program?
Mayor and Council, Ben Page, Parks and Recreation Director, again. As excited as we were on that last topic about what it's really an innovative program, we want to thank you. In last year's budget, you unanimously supported this and added this to our budget. This program is being modeled after the Evelyn K. Davis program that's been such a success in our community for over a decade. And I want to point out that that's a collaboration, a 50-50 collaboration with the Des Moines Police Department. That's why our police chief is here today. I invited him because I think it's fair that he helps share some of the success we've experienced in the past and thank them for their commitment going forward. Today, you'll see that we are going to take that great investment you've put in our budget and to add four more parks. We're also going to continue at Evelyn K. Davis Park. But all things that are good sometimes come to an end. And after a decade of great public-private partnerships, the Evelyn K. Davis program has kind of hit the wall as far as fundraising. $2 million over 10 years was raised, which is about 95% of the overall cost of the program, to run that program. I do want to, once one more time, thank the chief. He's personally led that fundraising, not our staff, but our police chief. And they've been there every time with us at those parks and those programs. So, he's here today to help answer any of those type of questions. I'm here to introduce our first-ever full-time staff committed to Social Equity Recreation Program. If you've not met Amar yet, you're going to have to sit back in your chair. He's full of passion. He is the right person for the job. He's led Evelyn K. Davis program for the last two years. He's beloved in that neighborhood. He's beloved everywhere we send him. So, you'll soon see, he's going to show you what the science was behind selecting four new parks. Of course, if we could select 50 neighborhoods, we would, but we have to start somewhere. So, you'll see the science, and you'll see what the program's going to look like moving forward this spring. So, we're very excited. We believe this is a game changer for our department and this community. Amar?
How are yours? Thank you for that introduction, Director Page. And let me just first say what a pleasure it is to be here today to speak about this program. So, this is our 2022 Social Equity Recreation Program site selection process that we're going to go through here. All right, so we've taken an innovative approach to equity-based programs. Our mission is to provide equitable recreation programs throughout our city parks. With the development of our no-fee model, we have been able to provide quality recreation programs to some of our traditionally underserved communities of our city. And through this, we've seen participation grow over the past few years, just, you know, beyond the realms of what we ever thought we could be. Even throughout the pandemic, we saw our numbers grow. We were serving, I think, when I started this program, we were serving around 12 to 15 kids per day. And at our peak, we were serving around 85. So, we just want to start by talking about our current program at Evelyn K. Davis Park, which is located in Ward 1. So, as you can see on your map here, this data comes from the Trust for Public Land. And this data shows in the highlighted area is that is within a 10-minute walk of the park. So, we're going to be talking about that a little bit, within a 10-minute walk of the park, because one of the parameters that we felt was very important when we start talking about social equity recreation programs and recreation programs in traditionally underserved communities. So, we've been doing this program at Evelyn K. Davis Park since 2010. We have provided spring, summer, and fall programming. What we've done here at Evelyn Davis is we've been able to partner with local nonprofits, neighborhood associations, and other entities to enhance events at the park, to provide evening programming at the park, to provide programs really throughout, really wanting to program Evelyn K. Davis Park every weeknight just to try and reduce some of the nefarious things that go on. We always thought that the more positive activity you have going on in our park system, the less negative activity you have going on in our park system. So, we've taken a, really, a very big leap in having programming tried to, just about every weeknight. We've also attracted significant investments in the parks, including our mini-pitch system that we put in Evelyn K. Davis, and it's actually spreading around the parks with the footsoff courts and also the basketball court lights at Evelyn K. Davis Park. And so, these are some of the statistics from Evelyn K. Davis Park. Once again, they're pulled from the Trust for Public Land. And as you can see, this is within a 10-minute walk of the park. We have just over 2,000 children within a 10-minute walk. And right below that, we have the household income of that area within a 10-minute walk. And as you can see, we look at the low-income households and compare it to the high-income households. And when you look at that number, it's almost 4 to 1. And as we look over at our race and ethnicity chart, this is within a 10-minute walk of Evelyn K. Davis Park, the different racial makeup, the race and ethnic makeup of that area. And as you can see, it is predominantly minority. So, 2022 and beyond, we want to build off the momentum of our Evelyn K. Davis program. Take that success, take that model, implement it across four new park sites. So, starting with 2022, actually, so this is what we went into our site selection process. Our location goal, we want to have one program per ward. We want to make sure they're knee-based areas. We want to make sure we had a safe space for our programs to operate and also partnership possibilities because we know we can't do it all by ourselves. We need our great community partners to step in and help us out where necessary. And also, when we look at park features, neighborhood access was a big one we talked about. We're going to keep talking about people within a 10-minute walk because walkability is one of the big features of our program. We want to have our programs in areas where people can easily access them. Sports courts, playgrounds, other green spaces, parks, amenities. These are all things that are needed for a full day camp program, day camp experience. So, our 2022 program goals, we want to establish stronger connections with neighborhood associations and other community partners, just like we said, to enhance programming in the parks. We want to build around our existing amenities in each location. We want to use what's in our parks to the best of our abilities to provide quality services for our families. We want to, we're going to bring four staff members each location, which means four dedicated staff members per park location during our programming hours. We want to continue to connect with the Des Moines Police Department. What the Des Moines Police Department did for us at Evelyn K. Davis Park through their community connections, community building, was just strengthen the connection between the community and the police department. The officers that we had, many times you saw them shooting baskets with kids, you know, hopping out their car, handing out candy, really just making a connection to the community that wasn't there before. So, it's one of the strong key features of our program. We also want to offer programming in lower-income areas, so what we call some of the traditionally underserved parts of our city. So, let's take this to our first new location for 2022, which is Martin Luther King Jr. Park, located in Ward 2. One of our big goals for Martin Luther King Park is to use the existing amenities, the shelter there, to provide all-season program. We believe we have the ability to do that. And by doing that, by providing all-season programming, we can have really just a program that buoys the park and is, has positive programming throughout the all season. So, let's take a look at some of the park staff numbers from Martin Luther King Park. And we look and we see we have just over 860 children within a 10-minute walk. We also have, once again, almost a 3 to 1 low to high income in that area. And when we look at the race and ethnicity stats, we see that once again it's a heavily minority-populated area. Drake Park, located in Ward 3. We want to build connections and enhance with stakeholders in the area. We've already started a partnership with Drake University to provide services and really just explore what they can do to help out in that park. Once again, also with the new construction of Drake Park and the new shelter, we believe that there's opportunity for all-season program. So, as we look at Drake Park statistics, we see that there are just over 1,200 kids or children within a 10-minute walk of the park. And also, we look at the low to high income, and we also, we once again see a disparity. And again, we see that the area is highly populated with minorities, majority populated with minorities. Our third location is Weeks Middle School Park, located in Ward 4. Our goals here are to continue to work with the Des Moines Public School District to build a unique program that includes the use of school facilities as well as park amenities. We could also use our school connections to grow all of our programs. We have a youth recreational scholarship program, which is awesome. We have other programs that we work with the school district on that we can use our connection with Weeks Middle School through our programming to help build and grow. Now, as we look at Weeks Middle School, we see a little something unique here. We see we have just over 1,000 children within a 10-minute walk. We once again see that almost 2 to 1, 3 to 1 low to high-income area. However, as we look at our race and ethnic statistics here, we don't see a highly minority-populated area. So, what that says to us, what that says to our team is we don't look at equity from a strictly racial base. We look at equity from a holistic view, and we want to try and find the best locations to serve the best, that will serve the best in our park system for our program. So, we've talked about our four sites for 2022, and there's one other site, Prospect Park. Now, due to the Iowa Conference Water Trails construction, this specific site will not be offered for a full program until 2023. be offered for a full program until 2023. But we are excited about what we can do at Prospect Park, how we can perhaps enhance some of the services, enhance some of the ownership of the park there. So our 2023 program goals will be to establish a programming presence, to increase activity during the daytime and early evening hours, and enhance park ownership. This is from Prospect Park. Prospect Park has probably one of the largest draws in our city, with just over 2,600 children within a 10-minute walk. And once again, when we look at our low to high income, low to high income statistics in our household income, we see that there's an area of significant need. So this here is a map of all of our program locations, just so you can see where they are at in the city, get a holistic view of where our programs are going to be. So this is a day in the life of one of our campers. All right, so as you can see, we have a 9:30 breakfast, we have a, you know, we have activities in the morning, arts and crafts, sports field camps, games. We do lunch, we do afternoon activity, we do field trips, cultural activities, special guests, then we give them a snack and we dismiss. So as you can see on our schedule, we're feeding these children three times a day. We're getting them, we're getting them sports instructions, we're bringing arts and crafts in. We're actually challenged by Director Page when I took the job to use every amenity that we have in the city for our children. So it's amazing to see some of our kids from our areas who have never been to Ashworth Pool, who have never been to Graveslake, who've never been to places that, other places in our city. We're taking kids from our city to other places in our city and it's like a foreign land to them. So we never want that to happen again. We want to make sure that all of our children, every one of our children in our city has access to every facility and every amenity that our city has to offer. And through this program, we can do that. One of the great things about it is, we charge nothing for this program. This program is absolutely free. As we search and do research about other programs in the city, other summer camp programs that they have out there, it would cost a family between $80 and $250 a week to be a part of a program like this in a different city or a different organization. And we're completely subsidizing that and we're giving that to them for free, which is an awesome gift for our program and our city. So, how much is it going to cost? What are we spending, right? That's always a big question. Our budget for this program is $552,000, six, five, five fifty-two, six sixty-five. And that includes staffing, which is myself, as a supervisor, we're creating, we have 20 positions available here for our program. So we, we have five seven-month positions, which are Recreation Specialists 2, and we have 15 four-month positions. So not only have we created a great program, free program for our children, we've also created 20 new jobs for people in our city that are available right now to be hired. So if you guys know any quality employees and want to work in summer camp with us, please let me know. Send them my way and, you know. So starting pay is 16, 17 per hour for our Recreation Specialists 2. And for our Recreation Specialist, our four-month position is $14 an hour. And we just got a bump, so thank you to, you know, to our department, our HR department. We felt it was very important to, to, to really pay these roles what they are worth. So we bumped our salaries up to show, to, I guess, correlate with the importance of the work that they did. I think it's important to note that throughout this process, we did a lot of research on this program and we didn't, we didn't, we were not able to find a program like this anywhere else in the country. You know, so I can say the search was not all-inclusive, but at this level of what we're doing, we are the first people, we are the first city to completely subsidize our summer camp program for low and underserved communities, which to me is, puts us in the forefront of equity programming, equity-based programming in the country. So I know that was a lot of information. Does anybody have any questions that I may be able to answer?
I don't, I, this is not a question, but I know that you attended Thursday nights at Martin Luther King and I got to know you there. And you, you really engaged with people and you did a fantastic job on Thursday night. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Thursday night basketball, once again, it was a program with at Martin Luther King Park and Evelyn Davis Park, completely run by the neighborhood organizations and Urban Dreams and other outside organizations.
And the police department.
And the police department as well. Oh, absolutely not, you know. So with, you know, that connection, it's just kind of one of those things we talk about, you know, our department is stretched to the limits and we know that, you know, but we have to lean on our, our partners, our community partners to provide program. And that's one of the, Summer City Hoops is one of the programs that where community partners stepped up the program in the evening time and provide positive activity. And so that's what we hope to see more of. We think with this partnership, with this program, we will see more community organizations step up and provide programming for their parks, provide activity in their parks, make sure the parks are well-used throughout the day. So just like I said before, positive activity takes away negative activity. If you have enough positive activity going on, negative, negative activity doesn't have a place to go.
Thank you.
Connie?
On the Prospect Park, was, is that because of the water trails, all the other things? You want to put it all together at once or is it because of just financial or is it that you wouldn't do it this year?
So the reason why we won't, why we won't do it this year fully, we do plan on having some pop-up programs. However, with the construction going on at Prospect Park, we, we felt like, we looked at it, we researched it, we felt like we could not operate the program safely with the construction going on and with everything going on there, we felt it was best to wait till 2022, 2023, when we fully open up. That way we don't have to worry about construction, we don't have to worry about, you know, any bulldozer coming through flipping the car, you know, anything like along that, that level. So just in the operation of safety, that was a decision to hold off till 2023.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else? Anybody?
Go ahead.
So how, how many, how many kids can we serve at each location? And then how are we, how are we recruiting the kids and what, what's the criteria? Because it's a free program, so.
So right now, we can serve, so we can serve up to 40 children per location. And we've used that number based on a 10 to one staff to student ratio, which is kind of the acceptable number for parks and camps. So we have four staff members there, so 10 kids per, per staff member, so 40 kids would be the max. And how we recruit is we, we connect with our school district. We talk to, we go out to community events. We talk to anybody who needs a program like this. Hopefully what we'll see is, we'll see a large number of people come out. Maybe, hopefully we'll get more than 40 people and I can tell Director Page I need more money and more staff.
Let me just add to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just briefly, too, it's a great question. We have not been able to travel the neighborhood meeting circuit without getting into the question, when do we get our Evelyn K. Davis Program? So I believe the neighborhood associations will be our first spot, but we do have a database of 30,000 families on our registration reservation system. We will do a full press, marketing, social media, neighborhoods. Amar at Evelyn K. Davis is planning to do the same thing. This guy walks and knocks on the doors, every door, he'll do the same with his staff to let everybody know, hey, we're kicking off this spring. That way we leave no stone unturned as far as the ways to communicate this new program.
Yeah, our goal is anybody who needs this program will have this program available for them. Yes.
Yeah, I hope you come out of your shell.
Maybe one day, maybe one day. I'm getting this.
So if, if you find that you have more kids than you anticipated, oh man, it'd be terrible to have to turn away kids. How could, are, do you have a contingency plan if you just get overwhelmed with, in a good way, with a lot of kids? Can you, can you add?
The first year is going to be a trial year, but we do think of those type exact scenarios because we want to make sure it's a safe and professional program. We have additional recreation staff that do other things that can help supplement. For example, I think a lot of you have worked with Joel, our environmental education supervisor. He can come in and do an event that day to supplement the current staff that are there above and beyond with him or any other of our staff. We have a special event person. So that's our plan this year is to use some of our staff that maybe have things going on during the nights, a lot of things in recreation happen nights and weekends, during the day they can come help out with these programs. Then we can make a full assessment after one year and talk with the city manager about what the, the trends were, what we saw, what we experienced, and see what his actions would be for us.
I have one question. I know right now in Martin Luther King, like Cis would bring over snacks in the afternoon. Will you, will they still be?
Absolutely. We, we just supported them with a letter to the federal government on a grant system that helps them. We will partner with any nonprofit that has a similar mission. Don't think of this as just sports and games. This will be healthy lifestyles, character counts, you saw cultural activities. We don't want to be known as just a summer camp of games. We want this to be the kids that have, to grow in all areas where kids need to grow.
So how do you work with the school district as far as, do they do provide some of the meals or at one point? And do they help? Would they have some staff or whatever that would be able to work?
So with the school district, we work with the community school coordinators to get the information out to the children. Just this past year, we had the Martin Luther King Elementary, Martin Luther King Junior Elementary School graduation at Evelyn Davis Park. So we do that. We work with, we work with Central Iowa Shelter Services to provide food for our children. They did, they did the meals last year and the kids loved it. With the school district, it's more of, you know, just going in there, talking to community school coordinators, making sure the kids know about the programming and making sure the kids have access to the program.
Okay.
Joe? What, what, what's the typical age that we're talking about that, that you're attracting here?
So traditionally, we get children between the age of six and 13. That's kind of the, the main group that we get over the course of the day. We've worked hard on trying to find, to expand that a little bit and see how we can engage some of our middle school or some of our pre-teens that sometimes get left out or our teenagers that may get left out. We do understand that there's a little gap in there between 13 and 18 that we just have trouble connecting with. So we're doing a few things. We've worked with the Grub Y MCA on Gaming Room. We've worked with, you know, just different organizations on how we can attract some of that, some different age groups. But traditionally, we say to get in our program, you have to have gone through all-day kindergarten so you, so you can be at our program all day, which is, you know, from nine to three, as you can see on our, our previous slide. But also, you know, so that's a typical age group that we see, really between six and 13, and that's kind of where we gear our programs, our field trips to, so.
And he's already started conversations with your newest initiative with Cure Violence. He's already having those conversations to say, where can we connect with you and dovetail our services together? Again, that speaks to your questions about if we get too many kids, maybe that's just a great partner to bring in as well to help us manage the workload and the numbers.
And so at Weeks', talk about bathrooms a little bit. Are we able to partner with the school and be able to use the bathrooms inside or do we affordable?
The answer is yes. Each one of those sites, except for Prospect, has a facility for hot days to cool off or storm rolls through. So that's another thing we liked about Weeks is we could get inside and have a true easier connection with Des Moines Public Schools. As you all know, we have a Des Moines Public Schools board member on the Park and Recreation Board, and so we'll be making that connection, help us provide some dividends there. Last, I just want to get one little quick point in. This isn't our first social equity program that you've supported. This is the second one. The $5 youth sports program has taken off tremendously. I'll just give you one quick fact. Right now, I just looked it up this morning on the way here, Pee Wee Basketball is kindergartners. We would normally see about 80 kindergartners. We haven't started yet, the number's at 280 right now. And so we're seeing it. I, I just talked to our area basketball varsity coaches, boys and girls, they're excited what we're seeing there. We're seeing numbers back into the thousands for participation between first through eighth grade. It's, it's working exactly like we thought it would work. So I want to thank the council. You've, you've made big, large investments in social equity for the kids in our community and we, we thank you. We're seeing it firsthand every day. You don't get to see the smiley face as much as we do, so thank you.
I'm glad it's working.
Am I being recognized?
You sure are.
Do I need to address you or can I address?
No, go ahead and address them. Thank you very much for asking.
Okay. So you said the budget was 552,000 roughly. Is that for like the expanded program or is that just one program?
So that is for the expanded program. That covers the cost for our employee costs and also the cost of running the program through the end of the year.
The 20 employees for like the five versus like the one? Okay. And you said that 95% of that cost is fundraised?
95% of the Evelyn K. Davis Program was fundraised previously to this. It just happened to be that, you know, a lot of the competing interests, there's so many good things to fund out there right now. And we've seen a lot of different demands in our community from food insecurity to rent insecurity. So funding that program became very difficult, but it's no longer feasible. So we're making that Evelyn K. Davis Park and the four other parks together in one budget funded by city dollars.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Good question.
What is the purpose of having the police in a social equity program, especially one that has, deals with like lots, high minority populations?
I want to invite you out because I've seen it firsthand. I invite all of you out every year. A few of you have come out to that safe summer kickoff. We plan to do the same thing. When, when you see the police department, when they're out there interacting with the kids, it's, it's amazing. The fact that they get a chance to meet the police in a different environment that they might meet them not normally in, they actually supplement our services. So when we don't have all the staff there, you heard him talk about, they'll play basketball, their own instructed activity and a game. So it's been a big, big benefit to us.
The purpose of the police is not to play basketball with children, though. The purpose of the police is to arrest people. So my concern is that having the police in areas with high minority populations, which we know are like disproportionately policed, that just creates more interaction with the police. I don't believe that, you know, paying the police in a soft light, saying, oh, we're playing basketball and doing all these things is really going to protect kids later on when they grow up and they interact with the police in a different way, suddenly they're seen as a threat. So I don't agree with the police being involved in this program, especially you said the police were doing the fundraising. Now we're not doing any fundraising. I don't think that we need the police involved in this program. I think that when we're talking about budget, I mean, like the police have an enormous budget. When we're talking about fundraising, I was confused why they were fundraising when they have this enormous budget. But I don't think that this, a program that is a social equity program, I don't think it's equitable to have the police interacting with, you know, high-risk populations.
I completely understand where you're coming from. Just from being there, to me, it's more of the connection, the personal connection that you have. If, as, as our youngsters see the police officers, hopefully they see them in a different light because as, as they're enjoying interacting with them and enjoy talking to them, it, it just, to me, it, it brings out a different approach from a police officer than maybe what would happen to a 20, to a young man, you know, so to a man with 22. So as you, you know, build that connection as you're a youngster, as a youth, and build that connection with police, the police become, you know, not an enemy, but they actually become a friend. Our police officers have been friends to our children, to the children in our program. So it's just, it's been a positive influence. It hasn't been anything negative. So it's, it's really been a buoy for us, not something they're seeing in a negative light.
I understand. What I'm, what I'm saying is those kids, they do grow up to be those 22-year-olds to get arrested by the police in the same neighborhoods, right? And like having the kids see the police in a positive light, that doesn't make the police see the kids in a positive light once they grow up and they start arresting them. I think it's an unsafe environment to put children in. That's just my opinion. I know that I'm not going to get a lot of agreement on the council, but I do think I needed to speak to that. Overall, I think this is a really wonderful program. I think I want to see more, you know, no-fee programming as much as we can. I'd like to fund that as much as we can. I'm really glad that this is expanding. I had a question about, it was really cool, you're talking about being able to do all year-round in one of the parks because there was an indoor shelter. I was wondering if there's any interest in like going into community centers for some of the other programs?
Excuse me.
Sorry, is there's any interest in going into community centers for the other programs to have like it through the winter?
So yes, there is, we do plan on, see, as we, as we look at social equity-based programming, this isn't where we're going to stop. We're going to continue to research, we're going to continue to look for avenues that we can use what we're doing to expand what we're doing, to, to make sure it grows. So yes, we will explore those opportunities. This is just our first initiative in this expanded programming realm.
And I think the short answer is absolutely. You have this winter, Amar's a full-time employee. He doesn't get to just take the winter off. Full-blown demand that we get a good resource out of Amar. He's already talking to the Grub Y folks, his colleagues there, to make sure that when the winter hits, we can not only partner and do our two recreation centers, but theirs as well. So a lot of great conversations happening about year-round because we're with you. It's kind of like the summer learning loss they have for school. We don't want the kids to have something happen during the winter just because we have to go indoors, so.
And you've got two recreation centers.
Two recreation centers.
All right.
Yes, right now, greatly remodeled.
The other thing, I don't know if this really matters, like it's probably like being pedantic. Um, Drake Park, I think, is no longer in Ward Three. I don't know if that's like, I still think it's a good location. I think it's, you know, like you showed the stats and that, you know, it's a wider area than it even used to be, but, um, I don't know if that's like a concern because the idea was like a park in every ward.
Well, that's a good point. The maps changed while we were working on this.
Yeah.
It's an invest DSM neighborhood. It hits a lot of our marks.
Ten minutes.
What's that?
It's ten minutes.
And it's ten-minute walk.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
That's, that's a good point. That does help. We, we'd love to stay there because we see a lot of need there too and a lot of demand, but it'd be okay.
Well, and, and I will say is the ward, I mean, I think, I, I get why we target things by, by ward and certainly like, I mean, Columbus Park would, which is switched from, and now with the third ward would, would fit in that same way, but I think doing this at Drake Park makes a lot of sense. I think, uh, it will serve people in, in the third ward. I think the key is selecting the right locations and I trust staff to select the right locations and, and these locations make a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Um, I think the other point that I wanted to make, um, I think Prospect Park is, is also a great location for this. Um, I did want to note again, with the police being involved in this, I believe it was Prospect Park where the police chased a black man into the river and he drowned and died. Like, th, these are my concerns with having police being a part of this program. Um, I just want to reiterate that I don't think that it makes anybody safer. I think that yes, it can make people see the police like not as an enemy, but when the police then become an enemy, like, it's a problem. Um, so that is just something that I think that we should consider as we are, you know, doing the pop-ups in, in Prospect Park and then moving on in 2023, that like, that is the site of like a tragedy, um, that happened to like a black man in the city because of the police. Um, I don't think I had any other notes besides, yeah, like.
Linda?
Good program.
I just, I just want to add because I know that there are people out there watching this, this broadcast. And I want to, uh, maybe set the, straighten out the record from my perspective. I've been involved with neighborhoods for many, many, many years, for twenty-five years. I was involved in the Fuel Up First program, which was a program that the police department sponsored. And I was there every single Monday morning at six forty-five along with twenty other police officers. And the value to that program was so great. I was there the very first day it started until the last day that it ended. And the students there saw the police officers as someone they could confide to, they could go to, they had a lot of trust with them. I'm there Thursday nights at Martin Luther King and that program would not be there if it not, if it were not for Officer Stephanie Schwartz. She has such a fantastic relationship. And just Thursday night, she was at the meeting and the, the neighborhood group said to her, we are so thankful that we have you. So, I, I just, I just want others to know that, that the police are providing positive things in our community, in our neighborhood. I've been there. I've seen it. I've been a part of it.
May I be recognized? Um, you said that a recreation specialist makes sixteen to seventeen dollars an hour or fourteen dollars an hour, depending on the, you know, length of the role. Um, do they get benefits?
I don't, I don't believe they do. They not get benefits.
Not the four and seven.
Nope. They're seasonal positions, so.
Roughly, how much is that a year for like one role?
Uh, seven months times.
Yeah. So, uh, so over the course of seven months, we guarantee them forty hours a week. So for those seven, for the seven-month employees, they're going to get forty hours a week for seven months. Um, I got that number somewhere. I was never great at math. Uh, but the four, the four-month employees, over their four-month period, they're guaranteed forty hours a week as well.
It's somewhere around like thirty thousand, forty thousand in that range, like less than that, I think, right? Less than forty thousand somewhere.
Yeah.
Um, starting salary for a police officer is sixty-eight K, non-including benefits?
Can I be recognized, Your Honor?
I'm still speaking, so I don't think that anyone's allowed to interrupt me based on our new rules.
Yeah. Well, we haven't adopted any new rules yet.
No, I know. I know. Um, the people confide in police officers, people see police officers in a positive light during these programs because they're the ones that are there. You could afford a lot more recreation staff with the money that you're spending on police officers. Police officers' jobs are not to play basketball with children. Police officers' jobs are not to fill up tanks with gas. Police officers' jobs are not to do any of these like community bonding things. And it actually costs us a lot more to use police officers in these roles than it would if we had more recreation staff or if we even paid our recreation staff even more, right? Because I'm glad that you got a boost for, for that pay, but I mean, the whole argument over like fifteen dollars an hour, like, you know, even saying it should be twenty-five, it should be twenty-three and stuff like that, right? Um, I've gotten the sixteen and I was like, wow, this is better than I've ever gotten before. So I'm not going to sit here and complain about that. Um, but I'm, it's just not really like financially like the best choice in any situation.
I just, I just want to be clear, uh, that we, we are not using police officers in any type of employment capacity. It's just strictly community relations and, and community bonding is what they're doing. So it's not like we're saying, uh, you know, you know, Officer Edwards, uh, come, Sergeant Edwards, uh, is going to run this program for the day. No, Sergeant Edwards is going to come over there, uh, fist bump a bunch of kids, high-five them and make them feel good about him being there.
Is he on the clock?
What's that?
Is he on the clock?
Um, yes, yeah.
So he's spending money to do that. That, like, I, this is, I'm not trying to be adversarial to you. I think, I've only heard wonderful things about you. It's, it's how I feel about police being involved in a program like this. I don't think that it is a net good. I think that it's dangerous.
I think you made your point. And do you have anything else that you want to add?
I feel like I did, but I haven't, can't think of it right now.
Uh, Joe, what happened to Joe?
If I could, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
I too also want to make sure the record's correct in that, and it was heard earlier that the previous pro, program with Evelyn K. Davis would not have existed if not for the assistance of the police department, which helped us set the stage for, for this expansion. So, uh, that is very critical. And then there is also something we haven't spoken about is even off the clock, uh, there are thousands of hours of volunteer, uh, by our police department and other departments as well. And so I got a clear direction, uh, from council, uh, and reinforced over the years that we wanted, excuse me, we wanted all our employees to be more active in volunteering. And we also wanted customer service to be at the highest point and priority for all our departments. And that includes every, and what that means is that every interaction our employees have with our residents is important. And we need to take the opportunity to find, uh, opportunities to have positive interactions with our, with our residents. So this is a great program that gives that opportunity for not only police, but other departments to stop in and see the great work that's being done. Uh, because I know I will be out there as well and I have a feeling you will as well, but other department representatives will, will be rotating through and assisting. So again, uh, every interaction matters. And this is a great program that gives the police department to have those positive interactions. They will be included moving forward. And I appreciate that any, uh, public conversation about public, or excuse me, uh, police interactions, uh, is, is only shared with the public when you know what the actual facts are. You're going to want to double-check your facts about the Prospect, uh, Park and we can talk about that later. Thank you.
I just wanted to reiterate what Scott said because every interaction, these programs don't exist with all the volun, without a lot of volunteer hours. And that includes many, that playground would never have been built at Evelyn Davis without the police department and all the volunteers. So I think it's a great way for all the employees to get more involved in the community and to engage with the community. And I think it's very supportive. And I think it's only built the programs and I think that's the biggest concern is what's impacting the kids the most and how we can get more positive interaction with everyone within the city. So I am fully supportive of their continued work and I think that we need to recognize what's been done and build upon that and not, and keep building this program because there's quite a few more areas of the city that could use this program.
I have one more question.
Joe had his hand up.
Sure.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Um, are the police restricted from arresting any of the children if they are doing any illegal activities during the day camp or anybody who's involved in the day camp?
You know, we've never had that happen, so I would say it's a discretion of the officer depending on what that would be. I, I shouldn't speak on that because I'm not the chief of police, but that's what I've experienced.
But they're like able to arrest anybody at any time while they're interacting with children?
It depends on what's going on, I guess.
Okay.
Joe?
So typically what I would say is, and I appreciate everything that, that the parks, the police department, without the police department, we wouldn't have the playground at Weeks for one thing. And, and I respect your, your position on, on what you're saying, but we need police to enforce the law. And when people break the law, they get arrested. And if you don't break the law, you don't get arrested.
Hmm.
And, and that's, that is our society that we have today. So if we can teach six, six-year-olds to thirteen-year-olds not to hate police officers because when they're twenty-two, hopefully they're not going to break the law and they're not going to get arrested. So we're looking at it in a different light. And so I'm hoping that you'll respect where myself and other neighborhood leaders are coming from, and I respect what you're saying. But to say that all police officers are bad and they're chasing people into the river, that to me is a stretch and shouldn't be said publicly at any point in time because that is not factual. Thanks, Mayor.
Yep.
Mayor, I'd like to end just by saying.
Please.
A personal invite to each one of you individually this summer. I would love to come pick you up or meet you at one of these parks, spend up to an hour with you and, and walk you through what you see so you can see it firsthand. I would appreciate one hour of your time this summer. I think you'll see a lot of cool things.
I just had one quick question. So if, for some reason, you have more children, if people would want to volunteer because you have volunteers, uh, you know, I know you'd have to have background checks and all that, but would you be willing to, you know, offer that up that, you know, you probably wouldn't, you'd have the staff, but you could have volunteers too?
Absolutely. We treat, just like we treat youth sports. Youth sports are not coached by paid city employees. They're coached by volunteers. So with the appropriate background checks and training, uh, we'd be glad to add some volunteers here there.
I just wanted to check on this. If, for some reason, because it sounds like it could take off bigger than you think.
Yeah. We actually, uh, in our past, uh, programming, glad that Rachel's here, we've actually worked with Rachel on, uh, just opening up our volunteer pool. We've, uh, opened, we've had high school volunteers come out to our programs. We've had, uh, council volunteers come out to our programs with pizza. Thank you, Connie. Uh, so we are open to having volunteers. Uh, they would have to go through our volunteer process, through our volunteer staff to be vetted, just to make sure they are working with children in that role. Um, but yes, we, we do have, we do currently work with our volunteer department and we are openly exploring and expanding our, the roles volunteers have in our social equity, social equity recreation program.
Anything else? Anybody?
Good job.
Yeah. Thank, thank you guys for the.
Thank you so much for the update and I'll look forward to coming out again this year.
All right, great. Uh, we need Carl to ride this back to the NSC.
Yeah, okay. I think he's going to need a basket, uh, on the other side because I'm not sure that one's big enough to pick up all the stuff that was in some of these pictures.
Hopefully people won't let her so much.
Thank you all. Um, this is a city council, uh, evening, so we'll see you all. Uh, Mr. Manager, do we have an early, uh?
Yeah, we have a.
Meeting?
No.
Nope. All right. So we'll see everybody about four forty-five.
Four forty-five.
Meeting's adjourned.